Session resume. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to take up the additional reference of business. And may we direct the Secretary General to read the title. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading, as well as communications and committee reports for referral to the appropriate committees. Majority, Secretary General.
Additional reference of business: Bills on First Reading. House Bill 5213, providing for a comprehensive and responsive civil registration and vital statistics system by representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedemari, Romualdes Andrew Julian, Asidre N. Lagman.
To the Comedian population and family relations.
House Bill 5214, prohibiting government offices and agencies from denying citizens' access to government services and public participation based on attire by representatives Bagaus and Danya Diokno N. Ismula.
To the Comedian civil service and professional regulation.
House Bill 5215, allowing Filipinos with dual citizenship to seek an elective office upon filing of certificate of candidacy by Representative Daza.
To the Comedian suffrage and electoral reforms.
House Bill 5216, establishing a system protecting the community intellectual rights of indigenous cultural communities and indigenous peoples by Representative Dumogan.
To the Comedian indigenous cultural communities and indigenous people.
House Bill 5217, establishing the Batug National High School in Barangay Batug Javier Lete by Representative Kari.
To the Comedian basic education and culture.
House Bill 5218, institutionalizing a national master plan for comprehensive flood management and control by Representative Plato.
To the Comedian public works and highways.
House Bill 5219, establishing a national policy and regulatory framework for facilities utilizing waste-to-energy and other advanced municipal solid waste treatment technologies by Representative Plato.
To the Comedian energy and the Comedian ecology.
House Bill 5220, providing for the reapportionment of the province of Eastern Samar into two legislative districts by representatives Libanan and Gonzalez-Cutifor Sheen.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 5221, criminalizing violations of occupational safety and health standards by representatives Elago, Tinio, and Corinna Luis.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 5222, prohibiting public officers and certain persons affiliated to public officers and their relatives from entering into government contracts by Representative Corbera.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 5223, strengthening the barangay fiscal administration by Representative Almario Dennis.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 5224, providing for mandatory insurance coverage and benefits for all line workers by Representative Cruz Agatha.
To the Committee on Energy.
House Bill 5225, requiring all national, regional, and provincial government hospitals to establish, operate, and maintain a dialysis ward or unit in their respective hospital and providing free dialysis treatment to indigent patients by Representative Cruz Agatha Paula.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5226, promoting the adoption of digital payments for financial transactions of the government and merchants by Representative Cruz Agatha Paula.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Terminaries.
House Bill 5227, extending the term of the EDCOM II by Representative Cruz Agatha Paula.
To the Comedian basic education and culture and the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 5228, defining electronic violence against women and their children by Representative Cruz Agatha Paula.
To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill 5229, establishing the Presidential Merit Scholarship Program by Representative Cruz Agatha Paula.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 5230, establishing the Philippine Geriatric Center under the DOH by Representative Cruz Agatha Paula.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5231, clarifying strengthening the enforcement of existing requirements under the National Building Code of the Philippines by Representative Cruz Agatha Paula.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 5232, providing for a Magna Carta for barangays by Representative Cruz Agatha Paula.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 5233, promoting entrepreneurship by establishing a sustainable financing program for micro and small enterprises by Representative Cruz Agatha Paula.
To the Committee on Micro, Small, and Medium Enterprise Development.
House Bill 5234, mainstreaming the use of bamboo as a sustainable material for the built environment by Representative Cruz Agatha Paula.
To the Committee on Sustainable Development Goals.
House Bill 5235, authorizing the DOH to set and approve the bed capacity and service capability of all DOH hospitals by Representative Cruz Agatha Paula.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5236, strengthening the National Nutrition Program by Representative Cruz Agatha Paula.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5237, providing for free freight services in the transportation of relief goods to calamity-stricken areas by Representative Cruz Agatha Paula.
To the Comedian Disaster Resilience.
House Bill 5238, mandating the proper installation, maintenance, relocation, and removal of overhead electric distribution communication lines and structures by electric distribution cable and telecommunications companies by Representative Cruz Agatha Paula.
To the Comedian Energy, the Comedian Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 5239, providing for the Magna Carta for public disaster risk reduction and management workers by Representative Yamsuwan.
To the Comedian Disaster Resilience.
House Bill 5240, establishing the creation of a telecounseling program for public schools by Representative Yamsuwan.
To the Comedian Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5241, penalizing the malicious and deliberate dissemination of false information that undermines public order or national security by Representative Yamsuwan.
To the Comedian Public Information.
House Bill 5242, establishing a legal scholarship and return service program for deserving students by Representative Yamsuwan.
To the Comedian Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 5243, institutionalizing the grant of vacation service credits to public school teachers by Representative Yamsuwan.
To the Comedian Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5244, providing for the Magna Carta of student athletes by Representative Bohobo.
To the Comedian Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 5245, increasing the minimum age of access for tobacco products by Representative Bohobo.
To the Comedian Trade and Industry and the Comedian Health.
House Bill 5246, providing for an education roadmap towards global competitiveness and human capital development by Representative Bohobo.
To the Comedian Basic Education, Culture, and the Comedian Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 5247, providing for spousal and child support by Representative Bohobo.
To the Committee on Revision of Loss.
House Bill 5248, extending the National Feeding Program to undernourished children in secondary schools by Representative Rama.
To the Comedian Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5249, declaring December ten of every year a special non-working holiday in Maykawayan Bulakan in commemoration of its cityhood and celebration of the annual Gintong Kawayan Festival by Representative Villarica.
To the Comedian Local Government.
House Bill 5250, upgrading the Hospital ng Maykawayan in Maykawayan Bulakan into a Level Two General Hospital as the Maykawayan City Medical Center by Representative Villarica.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5251, mandating educational institutions in the Philippines to implement practices on recycling in those that promote environmental stewardship in their premises by Representative Rama.
To the Comedian Basic Education, Culture, and the Comedian Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 5252, institutionalizing the granting of assistance to individuals in crisis situations by Representative Rama.
To the Committee on Social Services.
House Bill 5253, further amending the Philippine Teachers Professionalization Act of 1994 by Representative Rama.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 5254, increasing the bed capacity of the Southern Isabela Medical Center in Santiago Isabela by Representative Tan Joseph.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 5255, institutionalizing the DSWD Sustainable Livelihood Program by Representative Legazpi.
To the Committee on Social Services.
House Bill 5256, providing for a national framework for interns' rights and welfare by Representative Legazpi.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 5257, converting the city road passing from barangays Luna, Dolores, Milagro, and Tungonan to Lake Danau and Ormok Lete into a national road by Representative Gomez.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 5258, mandating the annual conduct of national voluntary review of the Philippines' performance of the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals and mandating the Secretary of the DEEP DEV to appear annually before Congress to report the results of said review by Representative Gomez.
To the Comedian Sustainable Development Goals.
House Bill 5259, amending the Fair Elections Act by Representative Poe.
To the Comedian Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 5260, regulating the ownership and operation of drones by private persons by Representative Poe.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 5261, amending sections fourteen and thirty-nine of the Act, providing for synchronized national and local elections and for electoral reforms by Representative Poe.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 5262, prohibiting discrimination on the basis of age, indigenous, racial or ethnic origin, religious belief or activity, political inclination or conviction, social class, sex, gender, sexual orientation, sex characteristics, gender identity, gender expression, marital or relationship status, disability, HIV status, profession or occupation, health status or medical history, language, physical features, and other status by Representative Poe.
To the Committee on Human Rights.
House Bill 5263, broadening the opportunities of Filipino youth by allowing graduates of K to twelve enhanced education in the Philippine National Police by Representative Poe.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 5264, expanding the coverage of the Domestic Workers Act or Batas Kasambahay by Representative Poe.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 5265, strengthening the independence of the COMELEC by Representative Poe.
To the Comedian Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 5266, prohibiting discrimination on the basis of SOGSC by Representatives Poe, Recto, and Benitez-Havier Miguel.
To the Comedian Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill 5267, providing affordable urban living through vertical integration and public-private leasing by Representatives Poe, Recto, and Benitez-Havier Miguel.
To the Comedian Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 5268, institutionalizing mobile legal clinics and barangay legal aid desks by Representatives Poe and Benitez-Havier Miguel.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 5269, further protecting the integrity of the right to suffrage by Representative Poe.
To the Comedian Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 5270, streamlining the implementation of government infrastructure projects by Representative Poe.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 5271, providing for the placement of tourist markers in all recognized tourist sites and gateway cities in the country by Representative Chuatay.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 5272, mandating the DEEP ED and the DPWH to allocate funds for the construction of water, sanitation, and hygiene areas in all public schools nationwide by Representative Chuatay.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5273, granting indigent senior citizens and persons with disabilities in the Philippines free comprehensive sensory health examinations by Representative Chuatay.
To the Committee on Senior Citizens and the Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities.
House Bill 5274, institutionalizing the Zamboanga Creative and Culture Industry Development Program by Representative Chuatay.
To the Special Committee on Creative Industries.
House Bill 5275, instituting a national land use policy by Representative Kimbo.
To the Special Committee on Land Use.
Resolutions: House Resolution 342 urging the executive branch of government, particularly the DFA, to take bolder initiatives within the ASEAN to urgently address the human rights and humanitarian crisis in Myanmar towards the restoration of democracy, justice, and regional stability pursuant to the obligations of the Philippines to promote and protect human rights and to uphold international human rights and humanitarian laws that value the dignity and worth of every human person by representatives de Lima, Abante, Bagaus, and Danya, Corinna Luis, Diokno, Elago, Erisa, Ismula, Lagman, Montes, Rodriguez, Rufus, Romulo San Fernando, Santos, Mark Anthony, and Tinio.
To the Committee on Foreign Affairs.
House Resolution 343, directing the Committee on Dangerous Drugs to conduct an inquiry to the seizure of an illegal drug shipment worth approximately 2.7 billion pesos at the port of Manila by Representative Flores.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 344, urging the government of the Republic of the Philippines to join the Hague Group to affirm its commitment to international law and conventions and to support global efforts to hold Israel accountable for atrocities in Gaza and to uphold Palestinian self-determination by Representative San Fernando.
To the Committee on Foreign Affairs.
House Resolutions 345, 346, 347, 348 congratulating Maurice B. Domingo, Elizabeth Maraya R. Muse, Natasha Brayne Neely, and Marc Cielo B. Domingo for winning gold, silver, and bronze medals at the 13th Royal Princess Cup International Taekwondo Championship in Bangkok, Thailand by Representative Lazatin.
To the Comedian Youth and Sports Development.
Communications: Letter stated October seven, 2025 of the Executive Secretary, Office of the President, Malacanyang, transmitting two original copies each of Republic Act numbers 12310 and 12311, which were signed by President Ferdinand Romualdes Marcos Junior.
The Archives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to include additional co-authors to House Bill numbers 87, 4058, 4744, 4745, and 4757, and House Resolution numbers 289, 290, and 295, contained in the list to be submitted by the Committee on Rules.
There's a motion. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Likewise, Madam Speaker, I move to include as additional co-authors of House Bills and Resolutions that are referred to various committees, the members appearing in the list to be submitted by the Committee on Rules, subject to verification of their requests for inclusion as co-authors of such bills and resolutions.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to suspend session.
Session suspended. Session resume. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to elect Representative Ferdinand L. Hernandez as Deputy Speaker of the House of Representatives.
There's a motion. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, on the part of the majority, I move to nominate and elect to the House of Representatives Electoral Tribunal as member, Representative Jan J.P. Padernos.
There's a motion. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, on the part of the majority, I move to reconsider the election of Representative Zia Alonto Ajong as Deputy Majority Leader and instead nominate and elect Representative Ajong as Chairperson of the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
There's a motion. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, on the part of the majority, I move to nominate and elect Representative Zia Alonto Ajong as Assistant Majority Leader.
There's a motion. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, on the part of the majority, I move to nominate and elect the Special Committee on Forestation as Chairperson Noel Bong Rivera. To the Committee on Appropriations as Member Arthur Yap. To the Committee on Energy as Vice Chairperson Arthur Yap. To the Committee on Ethics and Privileges as Member Jolo Revilia III. Vice Catherine Joyce Segoriceta. To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development as Members Jonathan Flores, Rodolfo Ordanes, Milagros Aquino Magsay Say. To the Committee on Labor and Employment as Member Romel Rico T. Angara. To the Committee on Natural Resources as Senior Vice Chairperson Jose C. Alvarez. To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality as Vice Chairperson Yedda Marie Romualdes as Members Julian Jam Boronda, Daphne Lagon, Jane Castro, Joseline Tulfo, Rachel Singson, Milagros Aquino Magsay Say, Nina Lacson, and Gurli Veloso. To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development as Member Romel Angara. To the Special Committee on ASEAN Affairs, Rachel Arenas. To the Special Committee on Creative Industries as Members Rufus Rodriguez, Mika Swan Singh, Miro Kimbo, Luigi Villa Fuerte, Richard Gomez, Bella Swan Singh, Angelo Marcos Barba, Laarni Roque, Ryan Recto, Brian Revilia, and Brian Poe. To the Special Committee on Globalization and WTO as Members Josefina Taliado, Anne Matibag, Patricia Calderon. The Special Committee on Nuclear Energy as Vice Chairperson Rachel Delmar and Leodi Tariela as Members Arnan Panaligan, Jaisal Yu, Robert Estrelia, Brian Poe, and Jan Padernos. Just to clarify, Madam Speaker, to the Special Committee on ASEAN Affairs, a Senior Vice Chairperson, Rachel Arenas. Thank you.
There's a motion. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to suspend.
Session suspended.
Madam Speaker, under the calendar of unfinished business, I move to resume consideration of House Bill number 4058 as contained in Committee Report number 7 and for this purpose direct the Secretary General to read the title of the said measure.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. The Secretary just directed to read the title of House Bill number 4058.
House Bill number 4058, Anak Appropriating Fans for the Operation of the Government of Republic of the Philippines from January 1 to December 31, 2026.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, the parliamentary status of House Bill number 4058 is that it is in the period of amendments and we have already adopted the committee amendments last Wednesday, the 8th of October, 2025. I now move to recognize the sponsor of the bill, Representative Michaela Angela B. Swan Singh, Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriations.
Representative Swan Singh, Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriations is recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you very much to the Majority Leader. I am now open to deliberating on the amendments pertaining to the General Appropriations Bill.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, earlier, we have distributed to the members copies of the substitute bill of House to House Bill number 4058. Madam Speaker, pursuant to section six, pursuant to section 106 of our rules, I move to amend by substitution the entire bill as contained in Committee Report number 7 with the contents of the substitute bill earlier distributed to all the members. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Chair, this is not an objection. I just want to be clarified.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Siungab.
Again, this is an objection. I just want to be clarified because a substitute bill is actually a new bill. And if we look at our rules, consolidation and substitution are both considered the same. By way of substituting the new bill, are we not going to introduce a new bill? Because as per my experience at the committee level in the past, when there are about two or more bills related, they are consolidated into one and substituted. Well, in this case, if we substitute now during the period of amendment, will it not require a new procedure? A new process going back to debating.
Majority Leader, please respond.
Yes, Madam Speaker, to respond to the query of the gentleman from Davao. Again, as previously mentioned, under section 106 of our rules covering amendments, it says on the top of page 68, "A motion by the Majority Leader to amend by substitution of the entire bill or joint resolution shall precede consideration of individual amendments to the bill or joint resolution under consideration."
Yes, I do accept that. As again, I am not objecting, but I just want to be clarified with the procedure considering that it is a new bill. So I remember there was once instance in the past, in the reproductive health bill, that during the period of amendments, a substitute bill was introduced and it was accepted by the author, the late Honorable Lagman. But the new bill was also subjected to a new kind of debate. I'm just saying this for just for process of accepting the explanation. I'm just pointing out that a new bill will require another procedure. So I just hope that it will be addressed, Mr. Speaker.
Your comments really noted. Majority Leader.
Yes, Madam Speaker, just to continue with the query of Kong Ungab. There were seven instances in which this rule was used, particularly with the Create More bill, the Cooperative Code, Maharlika bill, Bayanian to heal as one, reproductive health, the BARMM law and the Train law, all of which were replaced by substitute bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to, because if our purpose is to replace the small committee procedure, then the purpose is for transparency. So this should be more transparent.
Madam Speaker, with regards to that query, may I move that we request the sponsor, Kong Swan Singh, for her clarification.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The Honorable Swan Singh, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, in terms of the procedure, so all the amendments that were incorporated into the second reading version of the General Appropriations Bill, which were circulated to the members earlier before the plenary session, were deliberated on by the Budget Amendments Review Subcommittee last October 8, 2025. So all of the, the whole deliberation was livestreamed, livestreamed, then it lasted for around, I believe, 20 hours in total, including the first Budget Amendments Review Subcommittee. So in terms of transparency, we can vouch for that on the part of the Committee on Appropriations as well as the Budget Amendments Review Subcommittee, that all of the amendments were deliberated on and are reflected in the second reading version. And there will be no other amendments that will be incorporated into the General Appropriations Bill after it is approved on second reading. So we can commit to our distinguished colleague, the Honorable Isidro Ungab, that all the amendments were deliberated on, that are accordingly reflected in the second reading version. And there will be no other amendments after the Gab is approved on second reading.
Thank you, Honorable Swan Singh. Majority Leader.
Yes, Madam Speaker, thank you. That being the case, I repeat my motion. I move to amend by substitution the entire bill as contained in Committee Report number 7 with the contents of the substitute bill earlier distributed to all the members. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to proceed with the individual amendments, if any.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Sergio Dagooc from the Partilist APEC for his individual amendment.
The Honorable Sergio Dagooc from APEC parties is recognized for his amendments.
Madam Speaker, apologies, I withdraw my motion and move to recognize Jose Manuel Chel Diokno from Partilist Akbayan for his individual amendment.
The Honorable Chel Diokno is recognized for his individual amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I am referring, Madam Speaker, to the unprogrammed appropriations, specifically Volume 1B, pages 659 to 662. We ask that the Honorable Sponsor consider the following amendment, that all pertinent line items under unprogrammed appropriations with a total amount of 243,222,549,000 pesos be revised to zero. If these items are truly part of the budget priorities, then they should be included in the programmed appropriations of the respective department's budgets. I so move, Madam Speaker.
What does the sponsor say?
Madam Speaker, to respond to the proposed individual amendment, so the committee has already included in the latest version of the General Appropriations Bill, a revised special provision pertaining to the strengthening assistance for government infrastructure and social programs. In the latest version, in the second reading version of the Gab, wala na pong sagip. Infrastructure projects would no longer be part of the authorized uses for unprogrammed appropriations, save for infrastructure projects under foreign assisted projects. So ngayon po, wala nang sagip, meron na lang pong strengthening assistance for government social programs. So ang papayagan na lang po natin na sa loob ng, 'yung dating sagip would be those relating to social programs. So those that are there now, out of the 80 billion that was originally included under sagip, ang laman na lang po ng strengthening assistance for social programs would be 45 billion in total. And all of those relate to programs under the Department of Agriculture for subsidies to farmers, rice subsidies, DSWD as an augmentation for the four piece program, given that there is an expected shortfall in the funding for four piece, given the reduction from last year, so nakaabang po 'yung doon. So the 35, sorry, the 45 billion left under strengthening assistance for social programs all relate to social programs. Wala na pong infrastructure projects sa sagip. Now, in terms of the treatment for the infrastructure projects under foreign assisted projects, as much as we would like to put all of them as separate line items under programmed appropriations, the PAPs projects, the PAPs infrastructure projects that are currently in the unprogrammed appropriations are there because of this specific reason. These projects did not make it to the deadline during the budget preparation. For foreign assisted projects to be included as programmed appropriations, it would require two things. First, a finalized contract with the, with a multilateral or bilateral partner providing the foreign assistance. And second, NEDA board approval. These projects that are currently under unprogrammed appropriations are those PAPs projects that did not comply or did not make it to the deadline for these requirements. And hindi po nating pwedeng, hindi pondohan ito sapagat mga commitments po natin ito with our multilateral and bilateral partners, for example, the World Bank, ADB, KOIKA and JICA. And given that we know for a fact that these projects will start in the year 2026, we need to fund them because otherwise we will be reneging on our international commitments. So for that reason, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, as much as we would also like to recognize the point of our distinguished colleague, the Honorable Chel Diokno, to remove unprogrammed appropriations in total, we are unable to do that because we need to put in funding for foreign assisted projects under unprogrammed appropriations. The other items po na kailangan talaga under unprogrammed appropriations would be budgetary support to GOCs. We also need to provide for risk management, otherwise there would be commitment penalties. There is also one refund of service development fee for the right to develop nampe dai property in Tokyo, Japan, that is also an international commitment, providing the prior years LGU shares that is provided for by law. And in terms of the revised AFP modernization program, also provided by law, fiscal support arrears for comprehensive automotive resurgence strategy program, also provided for by law, Marawi siege victims compensation program, also provided for by law, and the comprehensive and adequate insurance protection of strategically important government assets and interest. Very important for us to keep that there because in case of these unforeseen circumstances, we need to be able to provide funding right away. And lastly, for payment of personal services requirements, these kailangan po talagang iabang yun. So I can, even though we are unable to accommodate the proposed amendment of the Honorable Diokno, we can assure that in the latest second reading version of the General Appropriations Bill, we have already put in place safeguards to prevent potential abuses of disbursements towards infrastructure projects from unprogrammed appropriations. And with that, Madam Speaker, the committee rejects the proposed amendment.
What does the House say?
Madam Speaker, we join the sponsor in rejecting the amendment.
There is a motion to reject the proposed amendment. Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Proposed amendment is lost.
If I may, we object. First of all, I find that the reasons given by the Honorable Chair, whom I greatly respect, are very shallow and would be rewarding of negligence on the part of the other government agencies. At the same time, I believe we have a right to ask that this amendment, which has not been accepted, that I move that the body proceed to vote on the proposed individual amendment.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there is a motion to reject the proposed amendment, which is objected by, by the Honorable Diokno. I now move to divide the House. For the information of the body, an aye vote sustains the motion to reject the amendment and a nay vote defeats it. The majority solicits an aye vote.
There is a motion to reject the proposed amendment, which was objected to by the Honorable Diokno. All those in favor to reject the proposed amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those against the motion, say nay.
Yeah.
The ayes have it, the amendment is lost. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, we would like to be clear as to the votes, Mr. Speaker.
I move to recognize the Honorable Ungab.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Majority Leader. I just want to be clear as to who voted in favor and against, can we count it by tellers? May I move, Madam Speaker.
Session suspended. Session resume. Let me reiterate my ruling that the aye votes is very clear. The appeal is lost. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we recognize Representative Lila Delima of ML Partis for her individual amendments.
The Honorable Lila Delima is recognized for individual amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Sponsor. Please proceed, Honorable Lila Delima.
Thank you. I propose an amendment to the budget of the Office of the President, of the Vice President, I said. Sorry po. So icebreaker, Muna. Again, I propose an amendment to the budget of the Office of the Vice President in the form of a reduction from 889.24 million to its 2025 level of 733.2 million, representing a reduction of 156 million or 17.5%. This is found in House GAB Volume 1A, Page 2, Line 19. Madam Speaker, Madam Sponsor, may I briefly explain my proposed amendment? Every peso in this budget is the people's money. And when we demand accountability, we do not, we do so not out of hostility, but out of duty. Duty to the Constitution, duty to the people, and duty to the truth. Let me then again put this on record. VP Sara Duterte's repeated refusal to face this chamber is an insult. It spits on the duty of accountability. While she clings to millions in public funds, she refuses to explain. This is arrogance. Congress holds the purse. And when a child squanders the family's money without answers, the remedy is clear. Let me be clear. This reduction is discipline, not demolition. A constitutional body created to defend the powerless. What we do here is different. We call out entitlement. We confront arrogance. We demand respect. It is a trust. And until the Vice President learns respect, this House must act as a parent that disciplines a brat. Alam ko po, that this move will generate varied reactions. It might even be exploited by certain camps to elicit sympathy for VP Sara. So Madam Speaker, Madam Sponsor, I respectfully but firmly propose the reduction of the budget of the Office of the President.
Vice President.
Vice President. From 889.24 million to its 2025 level of 733.2 million. I so move. Maraming salamat po.
What does the sponsor say? What does the sponsor say?
Madam Speaker, I move to suspend.
Session suspended. Session resume. The Honorable Delima has an individual amendment. How, what does the sponsor say?
Madam Speaker, the committee accepts the proposed amendment, subject to the following. First, we want to protect the interests of the personnel within the Office of the Vice President. So given that the current proposal of the Office of the Vice President reflects the salary increases of the said personnel in compliance with the Salary Standardization Law, we will ensure that the personal services will reflect that for the benefit of the employees of the Office of the Vice President. And second, we will also ensure that the final budget of the Office of the Vice President will be sufficient for it, for the office to be able to perform its mandate.
Salamat po. Indeed, hindi naman talaga po maapektuhan.
Majority Leader, what does the House say?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Madam Speaker, I move to propose, I move to accept the proposed amendment.
There is a motion to approve the proposed amendment. Is there any objection? The Chair hears now, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Ungab.
The Honorable Sid Ungab is recognized.
Madam Speaker, thank you, Mr. Majority Leader. Thank you to the sponsoring chairman. This is an objection at the same time since the Chair has ruled an appeal to the decision of the Chair.
Majority Leader.
Not to decrease further the budget of the Office of the Vice President. Despite the drastic reductions for 2024.
Madam Speaker, may we request that the Honorable Ungab stick to the motion to appeal the ruling of the sponsor rather than have an explanation for it.
Yes, Madam Speaker. The budget of the OVP has been deducted two times already in 2024 and 2025, and another reduction in 2026 with, really, I would say, crippled the office. Only two thirds of the original budget has been left. So I move to, I would like to appeal the decision of the Chairman.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being an appeal. Madam Speaker, there is an appeal to the ruling of the Chair to reject the proposed amendment. I now move to divide the House. For the information of the body, an aye vote sustains the appeal and a nay vote defeats it. The majority kindly solicits a nay vote.
All those in favor to the appeal, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay.
Nay.
The nays have it, the appeal is lost. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, moving on. I move that we recognize the Honorable Antonio Tinio for his individual amendments.
The Honorable Antonio El Tinio from the ACT teachers' parties recognized for his individual amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I am one with the motion of the Honorable Jokno in moving for the total removal of the unprogrammed appropriations. However, since that motion has been lost, then I would like to propose some amendments to the special provisions in the unprogrammed appropriations. The first being to Special Provision Number 1, Availment of Unprogrammed Appropriations. I move that the language on release of funds be reverted to its original wording. In the current wording, Madam Speaker, it says here, "Release of funds shall be subject to the submission of a special budget request and other relevant budgetary requirements in accordance with applicable laws." However, in earlier wordings of this provision, going back very many years, the wording is as follows. "Release of funds shall be subject to the submission of a special budget pursuant to Section 35, Chapter 5, Book 6 of Executive Order Number 292, Series of 1987," and the following, and so on. That's the important amendment that I would like to propose. And now let me propose, let me explain my proposed amendment. My proposal is to revert to the original language, which specifically refers to Section 35 of Book 6 of the Administrative Code. Because this is the specific law on availment of lump sum funds. And very clearly, unprogrammed appropriations are, fall under unprogrammed appropriations. And what is more important is that Section 35 specifically provides that any availment of lump sum funds requires the submission of a special budget, not a special budget request, which is what is mentioned in the provision, a special budget to be approved by the President. So napakalinaw po sa batas na gumagabay sa mga lump sum funds, kailangan may approval ng Presidente. Why is that important? Because that serves as a safeguard against abuse of these lump sum funds. At ang nangyari po nga ngayon with the flood control issue, yung unprogrammed appropriations ay inabuso. Napakalaki ng mga bagong proyekto na inaprobahan dito. So therefore, I move, Madam Speaker, that we revert to the language, and let me read again, that the, that the special provision, now read, "Release of funds shall be subject to the submission of a special budget pursuant to Section 35, Chapter 5, Book 6 of EO 292, Series of 1987."
What does the sponsor say?
Madam Speaker, with due respect to our honorable colleague, the Honorable Tinio, this is something that I've already addressed during the debates on the lump sum funds. So the current special provision, that Special Provision 1, as mentioned by the Honorable Tinio, is a correction of the special provisions that were there in previous General Appropriations Acts. The reason why this, the reference to Section 35 was removed was because there was some inaccuracy in terms of referencing Section 35 in the first place. Because there is also jurisprudence with regard to this, and I believe I have shared the same with our distinguished colleague during the deliberations. The jurisprudence clearly states that the prevailing document in relation to the availment of unprogrammed appropriations would be the special budget request. And for that reason, in the current special provision as contained in the second reading version of the General Appropriations Bill, we retained that correction. So we removed any reference to Section 35. And with that, Madam Speaker, the committee respectfully rejects the amendment proposed by our distinguished colleague.
What does the House say?
Madam Speaker, we join the sponsor in rejecting this amendment.
Madam Speaker, I object.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there is a motion to reject the proposed amendment, which was objected by the Honorable Tinio. I now move to divide the House. For the information of the body, an aye vote sustains the motion to reject the amendment and a nay vote defeats it. The majority solicits an aye vote.
There is a motion to reject the proposed amendment, which was objected to be by the Honorable Tinio. All those in favor to reject the proposed amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those against the motion, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, the amendment is lost. Majority Leader.
Mr. Chair, clarification? The ruling was that the ayes have it? The ayes support the...
The clarifying.
Majority Leader.
The ruling was that the ayes have it as a result because an aye vote sustained the motion to reject the amendment.
So I repeat the ruling, the ayes have it, the amendment is lost. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I now move to recognize the Honorable...
Madam Speaker, I still have another proposed amendment.
Proceed to your next amendment, Honorable Tinio.
Thank you. Still on the special provisions on unprogrammed appropriations, since the, the unprogrammed appropriations have been retained. This has to do with Special Provision Number 9 of the unprogrammed appropriations, amounts under the unprogrammed appropriations. The DBM is hereby authorized to approve the following. Use of appropriations within the authorized purposes and B, use of appropriations under the purposes of the unprogrammed appropriations, except the budgetary support to GOCs and the support to foreign assisted projects to cover deficiencies in the amounts authorized in any of the purposes under the unprogrammed appropriations. Madam Speaker, this is a insidious and very dangerous provision. It empowers the DBM to take any amount in the unprogrammed, for any purpose in the unprogrammed appropriations and enables the DBM to augment this amount. and enables the DBM to augment this amount with any other of the amounts authorized in unprogrammed appropriations. Ibig po sabihin, sa simpleng salita, binibigyan ang DBM ng kapangyarihan na i-realign ang halos buong amount ng unprogrammed appropriations para sa anumang purpose. So kaya po, nagiging only na discretionary fund ang unprogrammed appropriations dito. Kung sinabi po ng Kongreso, na it authorizes, say, 100 billion for a specific purpose. Let's say, a pension and gratuity, 100 billion. Pero pwede pong dagdagan pa ng kahit magkano ng DBM for as long as it falls within the total amount of the unprogrammed appropriations. So dapat po tanggalin ito, pambihirang kapangyarihan at discretion ang binibigay dito. At lalo pa, at tinatanggal po noong ni-reject na proposal ko kanina, tinatanggal na po 'yung final check and balance na dapat Presidente ang accountable sa unprogrammed appropriations. Dapat tanggalin na rin po ang kapangyarihang ito na binibigay sa DBM. Therefore, I propose that Number Nine be deleted. The Special Provision Number Nine be deleted.
What does the sponsor say?
Madam Speaker, in response to the proposed amendment, so the specific example that was mentioned by the Honorable Tinio with regard to PGF, just to clarify po, those are not under unprogrammed appropriations. PGF is a lump sum fund, but it is not an unprogrammed appropriations. The Special Provision Number Nine specifically provides that the DBM is authorized to approve use of appropriations or movement or for, to cover existing deficiencies only within the unprogrammed appropriations. And as lengthily explained by this representation earlier, we have already put in the necessary safeguards within the unprogrammed appropriations that would disallow potential abuses of unprogrammed appropriations for infrastructure projects. And with that, Madam Speaker, the committee respectfully rejects the amendment proposed by our distinguished colleague.
What does the House say?
Madam Speaker, we join the sponsor in rejecting the amendment.
There is a motion to reject the proposed amendment.
I object, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there is a motion to reject the proposed amendment which was subjected to by the Honorable Tinio. I now move to once again divide the House. For the information of the body, an aye vote sustains the motion to reject the amendment and a nay vote defeats it. The majority solicits an aye vote to reject the said amendment.
There is a motion to reject the proposed amendment which was subjected to by the Honorable Tinio. All those in favor to reject the proposed amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those against the motion, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, the amendment is lost. Majority Leader.
Thank you. I am done. Thank you.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I now move to recognize Representative Presley de Jesus of Pilreka Partilis for his individual amendments.
The Honorable Presley de Jesus from Pilreka Partilis is recognized for his individual amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, distinguished colleagues, and to the Honorable Chairperson of this Committee on Appropriations. This representation wishes to propose new special provisions to the subsidy of the Energy Regulatory Commission. The same proposal was also transmitted to your good office last October 7, 2025. Madam Speaker, in page 425 of Volume 1-1B, House Bill Number 4058, General Appropriations Bill, Fiscal Year 2026, line 37, I move to insert the following provisions as Special Provision Number One. Use of income. In addition to the amounts appropriated herein, the Energy Regulatory Commission, or ERC, is authorized to use a portion of maximum of 50% of its income derived from fees, assessments, licenses, and other charges to over its budgetary requirements, including trainings and development, personal services, capital outlays, maintenance, and other operating expenses, and such other expenditures as may be deemed necessary by the Commission in the effective performance of its regulatory functions subject to existing laws, rules, and regulations. Madam Speaker, the justification of the proposed special provision authorizing the ERC to retain and utilize a portion of its income is firmly grounded on its mandate under Republic Act Number 9136, or the Electric Power Industry Reform Act, also known as EPIR, which designates the ERC as an independent, quasi-judicial regulatory body tasked with promoting consumer welfare and ensuring the reliability, quality, and affordability of electric power services to effectively discharge these functions. The ERC must be provided with sufficient and sustainable resources. It is the opinion of this representation that allowing the Commission to use up to 50% of its revenues derived from fees, assessments, licenses, and other charges will provide flexibility and fiscal autonomy consistent with its independent character under the law. Remember, Madam Speaker, 2024, they have remissly 888 million, 2025, 902 million, and now for 2026, it's only 877 million. Madam Speaker, does the sponsor accept these amendments?
What does the pleasure for Madam Sponsor?
Madam Speaker, in response to the amendment raised by our distinguished colleague, the Honorable de Jesus, currently, among the laws that are in place, there is no law that currently allows for the ERC to use its income. And in general, for a particular OEO to be allowed to utilize their income for their own purposes, that would require a special law. This particular provision requested for by our distinguished colleague would require new legislation. And with that, Madam Speaker, this, the committee respectfully declines, or rather rejects, the proposed amendment of our distinguished colleague.
What does the House say?
Madam Speaker, we join the sponsor in rejecting the said amendment.
Madam Speaker, I insist that this must be included kung gusto natin makapagtrabaho ang ERC.
Majority Leader.
Just to clarify, Madam Speaker, is that an objection?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, there is a motion to reject the proposed amendment which was objected to by the Honorable de Jesus. I now move to divide the House. For the information of the body, an aye vote sustains the motion to reject the amendment and a nay vote defeats it. The majority kindly solicits an aye vote for the majority.
There is a motion to reject the proposed amendment which was subjected to by the Honorable de Jesus. All those in favor to reject the proposed amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those against the motion, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, the amendment is lost. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, I move to recognize...
The Honorable Swan Sing is recognized.
Madam Speaker, very quickly po, this particular special provision currently being proposed by our distinguished colleague was already the subject of a direct veto comprising the President's veto message back in December 2017. And since then, no legislation has been passed with regard to this special provision being requested for. Thank you very much po.
Majority Leader.
Yes, Madam Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable de Jesus
Please proceed.
His final amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On the same note, Madam Speaker, in the same page, 425 of Volume 1-1B, House Bill 4058, General Appropriation Bills for Fiscal 2026. After the previously added Special Provision Number One proposed earlier by this representation, I move also to insert the following provision as Special Provision Number Two, subject to formatting style. The additional budget may also be allocated for the revival or reorganization of the Distribution Management Committee and the Grid Management Committee, which shall provide the Commission with access to highly technical experts essential in the exercise of its mandate. The justification of this, Madam Speaker, this provision will strengthen ERC's institutional capacity by supporting the revival or reorganization of Distribution Management Committee and the Grid Management Committee, which will provide the independent regulator access to highly technical experts to address urgent issues in the power sector. Such expertise is crucial to ensuring the reliability of the power grid, the operational integrity of distribution utilities, and the protection of consumers from inefficiencies and unfair practices in the industry. Madam Speaker, does the sponsor accept this amendment?
What does the sponsor say?
Madam Speaker, the same paragraph read by our distinguished colleague is also part of the same special provision subsumed under use of income. And for the reasons stated earlier, that being, that would require new legislation that is currently not in place, the committee respectfully rejects the proposed amendment of our distinguished colleague.
What does the House say?
Madam Speaker, we join the sponsor in rejecting the said amendment.
Madam Speaker, I object.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there is a motion to reject the proposed amendment which was subjected to by the Honorable de Jesus. I now move to divide the House. For the information of the body, once again, an aye vote sustains the motion to reject the amendment and the nay vote defeats it. The majority solicits an aye vote.
There is a motion to reject the proposed amendment which was subjected to by the Honorable de Jesus. All those in favor to reject the proposed amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those against the motion, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, the amendment is lost. Majority Leader. Please proceed.
Madam's...
Yes, the Honorable de Jesus.
Distinguished colleagues, this representation wishes to propose amendment to the General Provisions, Volume 1-1B of GAAP Fiscal Year 2026. Madam Speaker, in page 680 of Volume 1-1B, House Bill 4058, General Appropriations Bill, Section 58 entitled Authorized Deductions, line 14, I move to insert a comma, a comma, after the word BIR in phrase, obligations due the BIR. The justification for this, Madam Speaker, under the current phrasing, the law may be read as if obligation due the BIR and contributions to Philhealth, GSIS, and HDMF forms a single continuous unit. Without that comma, it could appear that all these obligations, taxes, and contributions alike are of equal standing under one category of obligations due the BIR. The insertion of a comma after the word BIR ensures that taxes are satisfied ahead of all other deduction. This restores statutory clarity and ensures that proper hierarchy of obligations as intended by law. It may seem that we're only debating a single comma, but in truth, we're clarifying the law to prevent billions of pesos in potential misrepresentation and secure the fiscal lifeblood of the state by giving due precedence to taxes owed to the BIR. In short, no gray area, Madam Speaker. Does the sponsor accept these amendments?
What's the pleasure for our sponsoring chair?
Move to suspend, Madam Speaker.
Session suspended. Session assumed. There's a proposed amendment, what does the sponsor say?
Madam Speaker, the insertion of a comma would weaken the provision as it would alter both the grammatical construction and the legislative intent. Placing a comma with separate obligations due to BIR, that quote, from quote, "contributions to Philhealth, GSIS, and HDMF", thereby creating two distinct clauses. This change would limit the phrase, quote, "shall be satisfied ahead of all other obligations", end quote, to apply only to the latter. And with that, Madam Speaker, the committee respectfully rejects the proposed amendment introduced by our distinguished colleague.
What does the House say?
Madam Speaker, we join the sponsor in rejecting the said amendment.
There's a motion to reject the proposed...
Madam Speaker, I object again.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there is a motion to reject the proposed amendment which was subjected to by the Honorable de Jesus. I now move to divide the House. An aye vote sustains the motion to reject the amendment and a nay vote defeats it. The majority kindly solicits an aye vote.
There's a motion to reject the proposed amendment which was subjected to by the Honorable de Jesus. All those in favor to reject the proposed amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those against the motion, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, the amendment is lost. Majority Leader.
Tama na lang, talo pa.
Majority Leader.
Yes, Madam Speaker, I now move to recognize Paulo Marcoletta of Sagip Partilis for his individual amendments.
The Honorable Paulo Henry Marcoletta from Sagip Partilis is recognized for his individual amendment.
Madam Speaker, before I begin with my amendment, let me just manifest na lahat po ng aming proposed amendments ng minority...
Please proceed to your amendment.
...ay ni-reject po.
Honorable Marcoletta, please proceed to your amendment.
At ang Vice President na budget lang po ang inapprove ng plenario.
What's your amendment, Honorable Marcoletta?
Yun lang naman po. Anyway, Madam Speaker, this representation manifests a reduction to the funding items listed under the Presidential Communications Office, specifically under Item 2, Lines 9 to 13, Page 17 of House Bill Number 4058, allocating the amount of 1,450,000,000 to the PCO for the hosting of ASEAN, of the ASEAN Summit and Meetings in 2026. As I have pointed out previously and repeatedly, it is my position that this funding is redundant, unnecessary, excessive, and a potential avenue for misuse or corruption. Meron na pong 10.7 billion na nakalad sa Office of the President para sa ASEAN Summit. At a total of 17.450 billion for this ASEAN chairship. 'Yung pong 1.4 billion para sa PCO ay isang kalabisan. Kaya gusto ko po ay ilipat ito sa mga ahensya na maskarapat dapat makatanggap. Madam Speaker, may I proceed with the proposed line amendments? Madam Speaker, I have the following proposed amendments to the General Appropriations Bill for PCO proper appropriation for ASEAN Summit and Meetings in 2026, line 9, page 17, Item 2, Office of the President, I'm sorry, 553,703,000.
What's the pleasure for our sponsoring chair?
Actually, I have several lines. Shall I recite them line by line?
Honorable Marcoletta, please continue. Please complete your amendment, Honorable Marcoletta.
For PCO BCS appropriation for ASEAN Summit and Meetings in 2026, located in line 10, page 17, Item 2, delete 17,673,000. For PCONIB appropriation for ASEAN Summit and Meetings 2026, line 11, page 17, Item 2, delete 284,000. For PCO Philippine Information Agency appropriation for ASEAN Summit and Meetings in 2026, line 12, page 17, Item 2, delete 20,617,000. For PCOPBS RTVM appropriation for ASEAN Summit and Meetings in 2026, line 13, page 17, Item 2, delete 807,873,000, and correspondingly add this corresponding sum of 900 million to DEP Ed OSEC for build or repair of classrooms, and add 450,150,000 to NIA Irrigation Systems, and add 50 million to DICCTCIC for intelligence funds. That's all for PCO.
What's the pleasure for our sponsoring chair?
Madam Speaker, before I respond to the amendment, I would just like to manifest a response of the committee with regard to the first statement of the Honorable Marcoletta. with regard to the first statement of the Honorable Marcoletta. All the revised, all the proposals with regard to amendments that were submitted by the majority, the minority, and the independents were all deliberated on during the committee hearings as well as the plenary deliberations. And a lot of the proposed amendments from the members of the House were incorporated into the second reading version of the General Appropriations Bill. So siguro po, Madam Speaker, I would just like to respond to that. Na hindi po totoo na dinireject po natin lahat po ng mga panukalang amyenda. Dahil madami po sa mga panukalang amyenda ay nakapaloob na po doon po sa second reading version ng General Appropriations Bill. So I just wanted to manifest that, Madam Speaker, para naman po malinawan po ang lahat na talaga pong kolijal po yung ating body. And we are really harnessing on the collective wisdom of the House in crafting the final version of the General Appropriations Bill. And with that, Madam Speaker, I would like to respond to the proposed amendment of the Honorable Marcoletta pertaining to the budget of the PCO. The agencies that he mentioned po nalilipatan. We've already put in a lot, particularly around the basic infrastructure, basic enhancement, basic the best under DEEP-ED and NIA. Ang laki na po ng pinasok natin doon, 39 billion towards the build-out, sorry, 35 billion towards building classrooms, and around 18 billion towards the build-out of irrigation canals under NIA. And with that, Madam Speaker, the committee respectfully rejects the proposed amendment of the Honorable Marcoletta.
What does the House say?
Madam Speaker, we join the sponsor in rejecting the said amendment.
There is a motion to reject the proposed amendment, is there any objection?
Madam Speaker, I would like to register a continuing objection.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there is a motion to reject the proposed amendments which were objected to by the Honorable Marcoletta. I now move to divide the House for the information of the body. An aye vote sustains the motion to reject the amendment, and the nay vote defeats it. The majority solicits an aye vote.
There is a motion to reject the proposed amendments which were objected to by the Honorable Marcoletta. All those in favor to reject the proposed amendments, say aye.
Aye.
All those against the motion, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, the amendment is lost. Amendments are lost.
My second proposed amendment.
Please proceed.
Uh, this is towards the rebalancing within the DILG. The PNP takes 73.2% or 210.1 billion of DILG's total budget. And locally funded projects are concentrated in the PNP, overlooking fire safety and jail capacity improvement. Locally funded projects concentrated in the PNP are mainly equipment purchases like new vehicle purchases that overlap with past unutilized procurements. Fire protection, jail decongestion, and local governance training are underfunded by comparison to the PNP. It is recommended that there be a reprogram for 2% or 4.2 billion of the PNP's 210.149B budget into 2.5B to BFP and 1.7 to BJMP for fire suppression assets and jail infrastructure upgrades. The 4.2 billion can come from locally funded and non-mission critical lines, administrative and duplicative allocations. These amendments are geared towards staying realistic about the tight national fiscal space and rebalancing DILG's 2026 spending in the direction of outcomes such as fewer fire deaths, jail decongestion, safer jails, more capable LGUs, and enhanced disaster resilience. These seek to trim excess and underperforming allocations and strengthen fire safety and jail management, which are areas where risks are worsening. Madam Speaker, may I proceed with the proposed per-line amendments?
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. For PNP Personal Services Administration of Personal Benefits Central Office, found under line 23, page 1185, item 17 of the DILG, reduce 1 million for construction of new building of the PNP National Headquarters Phase 2, line 47, page 1,196, item 17 of the DILG, reduce 1.2 billion. For PNP 1 Network, found on line 53, page 1196, item 17 of the DILG, reduce 700 million. For PNP Drug Related Data Integration and Generation System, found on page 1,196, item 17, DILG, remove 300 million. For Camp, General Rafael Krame Safe Camp Security System, found on line 37, page 1,196, item 17, reduce 250 million. And for Procurement of Motor Vehicles, found under line 13, page 1,187, item 17 of the DILG, reduce 500 million. And under the title Strengthening of the PNP Anti-Cybercrime Capability, lines 15, page 1,197, item 17, reduce 250 million. And accordingly, add 2.5 billion to Bureau of Fire Protection, Fire and Emergency, and add 1.7 billion respectively to BJMP Inmates Safekeeping and Development Program, capital outlays, buildings, and other structures for modular dorms, perimeter CCTVs, and clinic upgrades.
What does the sponsor say?
Madam Speaker, the committee respectfully rejects the proposed amendment of the Honorable Marcoletta.
What does the House say?
Madam Speaker, we join the sponsor in rejecting the said amendment.
There is a motion to reject the proposed amendment, is there any objection?
Madam Speaker, I object to that motion.
Madam Speaker, there is a motion to reject the proposed amendment which was subjected to by the Honorable Marcoletta. I now move to divide the House. An aye vote sustains the motion to reject the amendment, and the nay vote defeats it. The majority solicits an aye vote.
There is a motion to reject the proposed amendment which was subjected to by the Honorable Marcoletta. All those in favor to reject the proposed amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those against the motion, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, the amendment is lost. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I now move to recognize Representative Renee Louise M. Co. of Cabataan Partylist for her individual amendments.
The Honorable Renee Louise M. Co. from Cabataan Partylist is recognized for her individual amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I propose to restore the budget cuts for 25 state universities and colleges or SUCs in the amount of 6.6 billion 774,964,000 pesos. I am heartened, Madam Chair, by the budget increase to SUCs in the total of 2.8 billion pesos enjoyed by 22 state universities and colleges. Many will benefit from having their priority programs or projects funded, especially Project NOAA for the Filipino people, student buildings in need of desperate rehabilitation, and student services waiting in line for years for funding. I am also heartened by the budget increase of Aurora State College of Technology in the amount of 95 million pesos, resulting in a budget higher than that was granted from GAAT 2025. However, that means that from the 26 SUCs that suffered a budget cut for fiscal year 2026, 25 SUCs are still suffering from a budget cut. While we recognize that the Eastern Samar State University received an increase of 70 million, South Cotabato State College received 30 million, and Mindanao State University received additional 14 million, they did not get their 2025 budgets back. So once again, Madam Speaker, I move to restore the budget cuts for 25 state universities and colleges in the amount of estimated 6.7 billion pesos.
What's the pleasure for sponsoring Chair?
Madam Speaker, in order to respond to the proposed amendment by the Honorable Renee Co., I believe it is important to highlight what the General Appropriations Bill already provides for as with regard to what the House of Representatives has approved as an increase in the allocation of the SUCs. The first of this would be the payment of deficiencies to SUCs amounting to a total of 12 billion pesos. Isa po 'yan sa mga pinakapangunahing hinihingi ng mga state universities at colleges na atin na pun tinugunan. And just to reiterate, 7.5 billion pesos of that would be coming from the HDF, and the remaining 4.5 billion pesos will be funded under the General Appropriations Act as reflected in the current version of the GAB. So yun po talaga 'yung pinakapangunahing hinihingi ng mga state universities at colleges dahil 'yung payment po na yun na matatanggap nila, yun po ay pwede na rin nilang gamitin agad-agad para po tugunan 'yung kanilang mga pangangailangan pagdating po sa pasilidad at operating expenses. We've also added 1.8 billion towards the construction of other facilities in SUCs as well as operating expenses, and an additional 1 billion pesos towards the UP system for Project NOAA. So we have, this is on top of the additional funding that we've put in towards the tertiary education subsidy and the tulong dunong program amounting to around 5 billion pesos. And with that, Madam Speaker, the committee reiterates our very strong support for higher education in the state universities and colleges. And as much as we would like to accommodate the proposed amendment, the committee respectfully rejects the proposed amendment of the Honorable Co.
What does the House say?
Madam Speaker, we join the sponsor in rejecting the said amendment.
There is a motion to reject the proposed amendment, is there any objection?
I object, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there is a motion to reject the proposed amendment which was objected to by the Honorable Co. I now move to divide the House. An aye vote sustains the motion to reject the amendment, and the nay vote defeats it. The majority solicits an aye vote.
There is a motion to reject the proposed amendment which was subjected to by the Honorable Co. All those in favor to reject the proposed amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those against the motion, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, the amendment is lost. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, finally, I move to recognize the Honorable Sara Elago of Gabriela Partylist for her individual amendments.
The Honorable Sara Elago is recognized for her individual amendment.
Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker. In Volume 1A, page 138, line 27, this representation respectfully proposes to add a budgetary allocation of 5 billion pesos to the presidential assistance to farmers and fisherfolk. This amendment seeks to raise the amount of direct assistance from 7,000 to 10,000 per beneficiary, covering 1.5 million farmers and fisherfolk nationwide. With this increase, the total allocation for the PAFF will amount to 15 billion pesos. Madam Speaker, our farmers and fisherfolk remain among the poorest of the poor. Many continue to bear the brunt of high-rise imports, rising production costs, extreme weather events, and inadequate post-harvest support. Rice farmers from Central Luzon and Kagayan Valley are struggling to recover from repeated floods that have destroyed hectares of palae. Vegetable growers in Bengep face plummeting farm gate prices while their transport costs continue to rise. In coastal communities, fisherfolk report dwindling catch due to destructive reclamation projects and fuel prices that eat up most of their daily income. For too long, Madam Speaker, these sectors have endured mounting debt and the constant threat of climate disasters. We must recognize the indispensable role of our food producers and a necessary step toward ensuring their survival. This representation therefore urge this chamber to approve this amendment as a concrete show of support and solidarity for our farmers and fisherfolk who continue to till our land and sail our seas despite hardship and neglect. Does the sponsor accept this urgent and necessary amendment?
What does the sponsor say?
Madam Speaker, tutugon po ako sa panukala ng ating distinguished colleague bilang representante ng unang distrito ng Nueva Ecija. I would be the first person to advocate for additional support and subsidies to our beloved farmers. And yun po 'yung ginawa natin dito po sa kasalukuyang version ng General Appropriations Bill. From zero, we have increased the funding for the presidential assistance to farmers and fisherfolk to 10 billion pesos. So itinaas po natin ng sampung billion 'yung maibibigay po natin na tulong sa ating mga pinakamahal na mga magsasaka. And currently, as for the current guidelines of the PAF, the current guidelines that would be valid until the end of the year that was created by the executive only provides for 7,000 pesos per beneficiary. So we are tied to that as of now, as that is a guideline that was provided for by the executive. But in terms of the current allocation po, the 10 billion pesos that we've provided in the current version of the GAB at 7,000 pesos per beneficiary would benefit 1.43 million farmers. And siguro po, I would also like to discuss this further with our distinguished colleague, that perhaps what we would want to do is to provide more assistance to more farmers. So perhaps we can discuss whether we should increase it to 7,000 to 10,000 because that would lower the number of beneficiaries that we could cater. Pero, Madam Speaker, as much as I would like to increase it further by another 5 billion on top of the already 10 billion pesos that we've already provided for, hindi na po kaya ng fiscal space natin. But rest assured po that under the current General Appropriations Bill, meron pong 30 billion pesos sa loob ng Rice Competitive Disenhancement Fund, and all of those would provide additional mechanization subsidies for seeds, training, crop insurance to our farmers. Nagdagdag din po tayo ng additional funds sa NFA amounting to 4.3 billion pesos to help the NFA procure more from farmers sa mas mataas na presyo. Kaya, ang dami po nating suporta under our current version. If I'm not mistaken, we have increased the budget for agriculture, the agricultural sector as a whole, by 55 billion pesos on top of the original NIP. So kasama niyo po ako, of course po, bilang representante ng unang distrito ng Nueva Ecija, ang rice granary po ng ating bansa. Gusto ko pong siguladuhin na talagang ibibigay po natin lahat na pwede nating maibigay sa ating mga magsasaka. And we've already added to the PAF by 10 billion pesos on top of the... And that is included in the total of 55 billion pesos that we have added for agriculture in the current version of the General Appropriations Bill. And with that, Madam Speaker, as much as it pains me to reject the proposed amendment of our distinguished colleague, given the limited fiscal space, the committee respectfully rejects the proposal from our distinguished colleague.
What does the House say?
Madam Speaker, I echo the statements... The majority and the House echoes the statements of our chairwoman in prioritizing our farmers and those who are in dire need within the agricultural sector. However, as previously mentioned, given the limited fiscal space that we are working with, the House is one with the sponsor in rejecting the said amendment.
There is a motion to reject the proposed amendment. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there is a motion to reject the proposed amendment which was objected to by the Honorable Elago. I now move to divide the House. An aye vote sustains the motion to reject the amendment, and the nay vote defeats it. The majority solicits an aye vote.
There is a motion to reject the proposed amendment which was subjected to by the Honorable Elago. All those in favor to reject the proposed amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those against the motion, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, the amendment is lost. Majority Leader. Honorable Elago, please proceed.
To another amendment, Madam Speaker. Volume 1B, page 227, under Special Provisions of the Department of Social Welfare and Development, Office of the Secretary, in order to ensure the funding of monthly cash subsidies for solo parents earning minimum wage and below under Section 15 of Republic Act Number 11861 or the Expanded Solo Parents Welfare Act, we propose the following amendment. Monthly cash subsidy for solo parents, the amount of 2.9 billion pesos shall be used for the implementation of the monthly cash subsidy of 1,000 pesos of solo parents earning minimum wage and below under Section 15 of RA 11861 or the Expanded Solo Parents Welfare Act. of RA 11861 or the Expanded Solo Parents Welfare Act.
What does the sponsor say?
Madam Speaker, my sincerest apologies. May I request our distinguished colleague to please reiterate the proposed amendment? The particular amendment that is being proposed.
Please proceed, Honorable Elago.
Madam Speaker, that is the additional special provision under the DSWD Office of the Secretary. Monthly cash subsidy for solo parents, the amount of 2.9 billion pesos shall be used for the implementation of the monthly cash subsidy of 1,000 pesos for solo parents earning minimum wage and below, provided under Section 15 of RA Number 11861 or the Expanded Solo Parents Welfare Act. Does the sponsor accept this amendment?
What does the sponsor say?
Madam Speaker, in the current version of the General Appropriations Bill, we have provided a lot to DSWD towards social amelioration programs. We have about an addition, we increased, in ex, we increased the other support for the other programs including adolescent parenthood, psychological services, and et cetera. And as much as we would like to find the additional fiscal space to respond to the particular provision raised by our distinguished colleague, the committee respectfully rejects the proposed amendment by the Honorable Elago.
What does the House say?
The House is one with the comments of our chairwoman and therefore we join the sponsor in rejecting the said amendment.
There is a motion to reject.
Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
There is a motion to reject the proposed amendment which was subjected to by the Honorable Elago. I now move to divide the House. An aye vote sustains the motion to reject the amendment and a nay vote defeats it. The majority once again solicits an aye vote.
There is a motion to reject the proposed amendment which was subjected to by the Honorable Elago. All those in favor to reject the proposed amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those against the motion, say nay. The ayes have it, the amendment is lost. Majority Leader. The Honorable Elago, for your next amendment, please.
And lastly, Madam Speaker, on the budget for Haven and Shelter Program for Women and Children in Distress. Under the 2026 General Appropriations Bill, only 3 billion pesos has been allocated for this critical service. We propose to increase it to 7.5 billion pesos, an additional 4.5 billion to ensure that every woman and child seeking refuge from violence, abuse, or exploitation can access safe shelter, psychosocial support, and reintegration assistance. Does the sponsor accept this amendment?
What does the sponsor say?
Madam Speaker, may I ask what particular line item the Honorable Elago would like to amend?
This is for the Haven and Shelter Program for Women and Children in Distress.
Madam Sponsor, please proceed.
And the proposal, Madam Speaker, would be an increase of 4.5 million.
Building pesos additional funding to respond to the need of the DSWD to cover for the building of havens and shelters for women and children nationwide.
Madam Sponsor.
Madam Speaker, we have provided for a lot of programs under the DSWD. Halimbawa po, we've added around 120 million, if I'm not mistaken, towards the buildout of Regional Bahay Pag Asas. We put in 500 million towards the establishment of the Mindanao Disaster Response Center. So if the Honorable Elago would like to push for the 4.5 million funding, that is something that we can consider moving forward because we would have to carve out from elsewhere. But as of now po, given the current version of the General Appropriations Bill, the committee would have to respectfully reject the request of the Honorable Elago.
What does the House say?
Madam Speaker, once again, we echo the sentiments of the Chairwoman of Appropriations and as a result, join the sponsor in rejecting the said amendment.
There is a motion to reject.
Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there is a motion to reject the proposed amendment which was objected to by the Honorable Elago. I now move to divide the House. Once again, an aye vote sustains the motion to reject the amendment and a nay vote defeats it. The majority solicits an aye vote.
There is a motion to reject the proposed amendment which was subjected to by the Honorable Elago. All those in favor to reject the proposed amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those against the motion, say nay. The ayes have it, the amendment is lost. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, move to suspend.
Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Serge Dagooc from APEC Partilist for his individual amendments.
The Honorable Serge Dagooc from APEC Partilist is recognized for his individual amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader. Good afternoon, everyone. These proposed special provisions, it does not consider any amount, increase in amount of the budget, but this will only enhance the payment of full relocation from the DPWH to the electric operatives. By authorizing the DPWH to transfer full relocation funds to NIA, the provision institutionalize a more efficient and transparent process. Distinguished sponsor. Furthermore, the joint formulation of implementing guidelines by the Department of Public Works and Highways and the National Electrification Administration guarantees consistency with existing laws, rules, and regulations such as the Government Auditing Code and pertinent circulars of the Department of Budget and Management and the Commission on Audit. This year, he sent project implementation as well as project as well as project the financial viability of affected electric distribution utility while ensuring accountability in the use of the subsidy for the full relocation. With that, this representation would like to propose the following special provision in the budget of the Department of Public Works and Highways. In the implementation of the foregoing, the Department of Public Works and Highways may enter to a memorandum of agreement with the National Electrification Administration for the relocation of electric distribution and transmission lines affected by the DPWH projects. With that, we delete the phrase exclusively under Special Provision Number 15, right-of-way acquisition and payment of the substantial obligations. That would be my proposed special provision, Mr. Speaker, Distinguished Sponsor.
What's the pleasure for our sponsoring chair?
Madam Speaker, with regard to the proposed amendment of the Honorable Dagooc, currently there is a line item within the budget of the DPWH under right-of-way which provides for payment of utility relocation including electric operatives. We recognize the concern of the Honorable Dagooc that we would like to ensure that the electric operatives are paid. And given that it's already there in the budget of the DPWH and it's already provided for as a separate line item in the General Appropriations Bill, the committee accepts the proposed amendment of the Honorable Dagooc.
What does the House say?
Madam Speaker, we join the sponsor in accepting the said amendment.
There is a motion to approve the proposed amendment. Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Thank you, Distinguished Sponsor. Thank you, Majority Leader. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member who wishes to propose individual amendments, I move to close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendments is closed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to approve on second reading, House Bill Number 4058 as amended.
There is a motion to approve on second reading, House Bill Number 4058 as amended. Those who are in favor of the bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill Number 4058 is approved on second reading as amended. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no business left for the day, I move to adjourn session until Monday, the 13th of October 2025. I so move.
Session is adjourned.
Ah, Monday, 1:00 p.m., 13th of October 2025.
Session is adjourned until October 13, Monday at 1:00 p.m. Congratulations, everyone.